To explain the city infraction ticket ordinance. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Motion approved the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, high host. Motion carries. Director Tralka is not with us today, but Captain Leibl is. Joe, why don't you explain to us what that PD is proposing here, please?
Captain Joe Leibl, Waterloo Police Department. Director Tralka apologizes for not being here today. He's got training and couldn't make it. This has largely been his work, and I know he's talked to many of you about it, so if I miss something, feel free to catch me on it. Basically, it's an infraction versus a citation. If we issue a traffic ticket right now, the fine for an individual for most of these violations listed, which are red lights, speeding, falling too closely, stop sign, no seat belt, failure to secure a child, and failure to maintain, is $195. It'd be the ticket if you got a citation for it. Director Tralka, of that, we get about $90. So, the rest goes to the state for court costs, surcharges, and et cetera. Director Tralka is proposing a city infraction, which would be a flat $100 fine for those violations, of which we would get the entire violation. We'd get the whole $100 rather than giving $95 of it away for the majority of them. Some of them, fines are slightly different. But, for the majority of them, it'd be a flat $100. The city would collect that $100 within 15 days. If they don't, their method of appealing that infraction would be simply to be issued the traffic citation and go through the regular court process. So, I know most of you are aware that that's basically it in a nutshell. If anybody's got any questions, it wouldn't be issued on personal injury accidents.
Ms. Cole.
Where does the $100... Whose budget does the $100 go into?
I would believe ours, yes.
Oh, I see.
If I could speak to that.
Yes.
Ms. Cole, actually, it won't go into there.
Okay.
In order to avoid any... Well, council will have to approve this, but it will be my recommendation upon passing this, that all fine money goes into an account in the clerk's office that will then go to the general fund in order to not have any indication of the cops are out there writing tickets so that they can make more money. That's the last thing we want. That's not the reason for it, so we are proposing that this becomes part of the general fund.
That would be a change in the current budget, because right now, if I'm correct, fines do come into our budget.
That would be a change in the current budget.
Yes.
And actually, it'll be a change in several, by this, Joe.
Right.
So that... So that those monies go into a particular account that goes into the general fund.
Are other cities in the state doing this, or is this...
Nobody's doing this exact method. This is kind of a copy of the red light and speeding camera system, other than without... We'll have a personal contact. The officer will talk to the violator.
Our attorney just walked through the door, Ms. Cole, and I did ask him to come to answer any questions, such as the two that you just asked, so maybe he can help us out.
Sure I can.
The first question, Jim, was immediately, where does the money go that's collected from these fines? And I tried feebly to explain what your proposal is going to be that hasn't been adopted yet or even talked about, but what your proposal would be for that, and also, is anybody else doing this?
Well, I've got a draft of a resolution, whenever anybody's ready to look at it, that deals with the allocation of funds. I assume we're being recorded.
We are.
That goes with the... When the allocation has to be made. As you know, in the past, we've not had significant amounts to worry about within each department. They're not insubstantial, but this is a big boost. The idea, hopefully, will add a lot of money to the city side of the penalty process. We won't be sending it to Des Moines, or it won't be siphoned off for other uses. We'll be able to keep it within the city. The downside of that is that it does start to influence behaviors, and it starts to become a problem for citizens if they see a direct connection between an enforcement process and the officer's discretion. We'd like the officers to be unfettered in their discretion, to be of traditional discretion, to do exactly what they've always done. And if we can separate the flow of funds from the department involved, that'll become easier. The money will still be in the city. It's impossible to totally separate it. There's certainly no question but that this is legal under current Iowa law for cities to collect this money. The... And the horizon threat is that the legislature will someday decide they don't like the fact that this money's coming out of the court system, and they'll change it back. When that happens, you'll have to react. Any other question?
Well, and that's just where I was gonna go, that, yeah, wherever this... So, we collect $195 today, correct? How much of it stays in Waterloo?
About $95.
Okay, so what we're really talking about is increase in our income, five bucks.
Well, yes, but not charging the person with the infraction with $195.
But the income to the city is five bucks.
Yes, that's correct.
True.
Okay.
But I...
But the outflow is less for the community. Yeah, this... Mr. Jones is correct. The citation won't be $195. We'd get $100 now, but the state collects... Or we get $95 now, the state collects the additional.
But this could be a person from Dyersville or Des Moines, so it's not...
Well, he's got it right now, as the ordinance is written restricted to Blackhawk County only, largely because if we have to issue the citation, we would have to go to Dyersville to issue that citation, and obviously, the travel would get quite expensive if somebody from California or another state or whatever got one.
And then that was gonna be the other question. Wherever it is that this other $100 is going to, we're relatively comfortable that they're gonna be accepting of this and...
Right now, the... This was all brought about, the narrowing of the law, and this was brought about by the automated traffic devices that caused the court staff to look at it. They said, "Where is this money going to that is being collected for what used to be a traffic offense under our state law and go through the court system?" And they said it's okay, that there isn't... It isn't in conflict with the state law right now. That money that's collected by the state is maybe fairly remitted mostly to the state now. I'm sorry, not mostly, but a significant amount of it goes to the state. And what we're proposing is save the money, let the people at home keep it, without reducing our part in any substantial way.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
So, my understanding is if someone has an infraction, you've got three things you can do. One is give them a warning, and you do that today, right? One is give them the traditional infraction, which you have an option to do today. So then we add this third, the municipal infraction. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. There'd be three options.
Basically, you have more tools.
Yes.
But if someone... You pull some over and they dispute it right away, you can just give them the traditional infraction, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Yeah, Captain Leibl, or Jim.
Joe.
What if somebody was to... Because I see this is just gonna apply to Blackhawk County. What if somebody gets stopped, they're not in... They're not from Blackhawk County? Isn't that...
Just like when you go...
...legal to do that, to discriminate?
Yes, we can do that. It's just like when you go through the automated traffic device in Cedar Rapids. You... They don't care where you're from, you still get your citation. Now, the problem becomes when you try and enforce it. It's a little more difficult with the automated one, but the officer, in this case, will have seen the violator, will have interacted with the violator, will have a clear record of what happened, and the citation under the state system can be done later. You don't have to do it right then. So, if they don't pay the fine, you can write them up a regular citation, and it'll go through the court system.
Go ahead. I think you misunderstood your question.
Yeah.
Well, it sounded like this only applied to residents of Blackhawk County, this municipal infraction. And I don't know if that's legal.
I don't know if that was the intent. I think anybody going through here that violates a traffic law, we could write them a citation municipally, or we could write it like we always did.
Disqualifying criteria, number six, the violator is not a resident of Blackhawk County.
So, we wouldn't bother writing it because they wouldn't have to pay it.
But you can give them a regular...
Yeah.
$185, $95 ticket, like we're used to paying. Well, some...
Now, the automated devices in some places do still issue it, but people frequently just won't pay it. They'll ignore it because it's not enforced by the court system.
So, there's no problem with them if they yell, "How come we weren't given the option of a municipal infraction ticket?"
No, you can write either way for any reason. You can write either ticket.
Or none at all.
Pardon me?
Or none at all.
Or none at all. That's what I prefer when I get stopped.
And another question. What if we come to a situation where a person is issued an infraction ticket but does not believe that they committed a crime? So, you said, "I did a rolling stop, but I didn't do a rolling stop." My interpretation is there any due process, or do you just say, "Okay, I'm just gonna write you a ticket"?
Yeah, the due process would be the citation through the court system instead of the infraction. So, it's already built into that side.
So, I leave with an infraction. Then to go back and challenge that?
You would get a traffic citation.
How do they know to get the traffic citation, Joe?
We'd wait...
How do they switch from the infraction?
We'd wait 15 days. If the violation wasn't paid, then they'd get the citation.
So, that's all they have to do to trigger the citation?
Yeah.
If they're not guilty, is to not pay it, and then they will...
Right. Or that... I mean, they could tell the officer right there, too, that, "I'm not gonna... I'm not gonna pay this. I don't believe it." And he could turn around and just issue the citation instead.
One other question. How do we determine the 15 calendar days?
Director Tralka determined that. I don't know where he came up with 15. He was at 30, and he reduced to 15.
If there's a possibility talking to him, maybe we can take a look at 30.
Further?
Captain Leibl, do you see any particular problem yourself with this at all?
No, it shouldn't be really a problem. We have officers... Some of these citations, you know, a red light ticket's $195. There's officers just... It's $195, and the lady was just late for work, or they have a hard time writing that size ticket. When I was in patrol, that same ticket was $41. So, they've grown astronomical compared to what everybody else's life has, largely to support court costs and surcharges. The fines have went up, but not near the degree of those. So, no, I don't... I don't see any real enforceable problems. I think it'll be... I think you'll see a lot of revenue shifted from the traffic citation side to the infraction side.
Let me add, this is not new. It's done in many jurisdictions, in many different states, in different ways, so it's not uncommon. The price of tickets has gotten so high, as has been pointed out. A lot of officers don't wanna issue them. This is easier for both sides.
I have never met one of those officers.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
The cost for executing the administrative piece of this, do you have funds or personnel to do that currently, or will we have to have an addition?
We would do it with our existing personnel.
When would you like to bring this to council?
Director Tralka would like to bring it for the March 3 meeting, is what his intent was.
Well, we may not get it quite that soon, but very good. You're ready to go with it, though?
Yes, we are ready.
So, let me ask one more question. So, for any traffic infraction or city infraction that is not disqualified, that meets the citable violations, that person will be issued an infraction and not a standard ticket?
That's really hard to predict. It would depend on a lot of factors. The disqualifying factors are automatic, but there's other factors that could come into play. A severe accident where nobody was hurt, where the person was obviously... Obviously, at fault for texting or some other violation that maybe is not citable. There's a lot of violations that could change that. I wouldn't... I wouldn't say that every single one's gonna be an infraction first.
So, just, I guess my question, just to cut through Chase, is the fairness in the distribution to everyone that has a violation? That's, you know, is Person A going to get an infraction, Person B is not going to get an infraction. How are we going to maintain that this is equitable across every group with same situations?
Well, I can't really guarantee that it'd be equitable from officer to officer. The system isn't equitable from officer to officer now. One officer may issue Ms. Cole a ticket, and the other officer may let her go. She's not met that officer yet, but it's possible. So, there's discretion in the system. There's no way I can sit here and tell you that it would be equitable across...
It's the wrong hair.
...social, economic, racial lines. That's impossible to predict.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to, all of you that... Brave souls that came out and found us in our new location here for whatever period we are here, so thank you for coming. We have a good turnout tonight, and just for the sake of those that may catch us on our public access television, if you're turned on tonight at 5:30 to watch this, we weren't there. So, until we get back in our regular council chambers, the council chambers will be taped and will be replayed at the normal hours, but there won't be a live broadcast at 5:30, as there has been. We don't have the capability of doing that down here. So, anyway, thank you all for joining us. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Thank you very much. I just... Do we have a flag? We do have a flag. It's over there. Who is doing that tonight? Me! Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, ladies and gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You may be seated. And council, as I... As we start with all of this, please be reminded, as we were earlier, we're gonna have to kinda speak up. We don't have speakers here, ladies and gentlemen, so try to speak up as you can. Thanks, Quentin.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, and also approve the minutes of February 17th for regular session.
Second.
Council, do you have any comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We're gonna start tonight. We have a couple of proclamations. We're gonna start with a Quota International proclamation. Deanna Rustad, Eileen Gunderson, Kathleen Zemolick, Vicki Grimes, Monica Heg, and Mary Twate. If you would all join me, kind of right down here, I will attempt to get out of here and come around, and we'll read this. Come on up here. Why don't I... Some of you get on one side, and some on the other side, and how are you? Haven't seen you for 100 years. How are you guys? Good, 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 good. Thank you all for coming. We have a proclamation tonight honoring Quota Cares Month. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas Quota International, founded in 1919, is an international service organization devoted to promoting international understanding through friendship and service to communities for the common good. And whereas the Cops and Kids Reading Program was formed in 2004 to improve the reading skills of at-risk children by introducing them to the adventure and creativity received from reading and to empower all children to strive toward the fundamental success in life through recognition of the importance of reading. And whereas the Cops and Kids Reading Program assembles community members to share the responsibility of social and educational development, encourages positive relationships between police officers and youth, ensuring all children have the opportunity to explore their full potential. And whereas, through the cooperation of Quota International of Waterloo, Iowa, and through the City of Waterloo Police Department, the Cops and Kids Reading Program has been a successful part of our community for 10 years now. Now, therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim March 2014 as Quota Cares... Quota Cares Month, featuring Cops and Kids Reading Program. So, I wanna congratulate all of you ladies and all of the folks with Quota International, and I'd like to give this to Deanna, and I give her a microphone, and there you go.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, and council members for this proclamation. As mentioned, the Quota Club is very active in our community, especially over the next few weeks. We will not only be participating in book giveaways, but also on March 18th and 21st, we will be volunteering at the Aspire Therapeutic Writing Program, facilitating working with kids ages four through 13 to learn about the miniature horses. The Quota Club is also... Will also be hosting two volunteer days in March to help with preparation for Aspires Trotting Towards the Future Benefit. And on April 6th, from 9:30 to 12:30, we'll be hosting our annual benefit brunch. All proceeds from this event go back into the community through our various service projects. You can go to our website at WaterlooQuota.com for any more information.
Very good. Thanks, Deanna. Thank you, guys, all, and thank you what you do for our kids. Much appreciated.
That's okay, Buck.
Okay. Very good. We're a little cramped up here, you know? We have a proclamation for Payne AME Church. I don't see anybody here. Is there anybody here from Payne? I'm not gonna read the whole thing, though, then. I'm just going to let you guys know that Payne AME Church is celebrating their anniversary's founding day celebration, and all of us are aware that Payne AME is a church that's been well-established in Waterloo for well over 100 years. So, we congratulate Payne AME Church on their celebration.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to make the motion that we receive, place on file, and prove the consent agenda, items 1A through B19. Also, with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $3,164,988.21, 3,164,988.21.
Second.
Council, you have any comments on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Council, I know there are a couple of people, at least one here, that I would like to recognize. Christina Wood. Christina, if you would just stand up for us, please, and let the cameras get a picture of you there. Christina is our new cultural and arts board member. She just volunteered to step up and give us some of her time, and we appreciate that very much, Christina. Your time is valuable, and we appreciate that you will share a part of it with us in helping us do our jobs. So, thank you very much. Angela Reed, is Angela here? Angela is not here, but she has been offered a position as coordinator for the current civil service list, also for the cultural and arts department. And I think that's all we have, so thank you, all of you guys. Much appreciated. Christina, you're welcome to stay with us through the rest of the meeting and learn a little bit of civics, or if you don't choose to do so, your leaving will not offend any of us, so it's your choice. Okay, thank you very much. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, and that's a notice of the public hearing for the fiscal year 2014 Cedar Valley Vista Shelter Project.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to the Cedar Vista Shelter Project? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number two in our agenda tonight? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Council, do you have any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and receive and file, and instruct the city clerk to open and read bids, and refer to Leisure Services Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you need help?
Maybe.
I'd be glad to do the zipping for you. Where's your tool? And here we go.
First bid is from B&amp;B Builders and Supply of Waterloo, Iowa.
What's the process here? Take this off?
We're just opening it up.
Got a rookie opening the bids here, ladies and gentlemen, so just bear with me for just a minute, please.
Just doing the sharp objects, right?
The bid bond is... The bid bond is 5%. And the total bid price is $71,370.71,370.00.
All of these? Okay, go ahead.
The next bid is from McGee Construction Company of Cedar Falls, Iowa.
Our city clerk slammed her middle finger in her garage door last week, ladies and gentlemen, and she's incapacitated right now.
The bid bond is for 5%. And the total bid price is $77,350.77,350.00. The final bid is from Nichols Construction Incorporated of Evansdale, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total bid is for $68,006,800.00.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hart.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing for a request by Harris Cleaning of Waterloo, Iowa, for a site plan amendment to the M2P Planned Industrial District to allow for the construction of an 80 by 125, 10,000-square-foot industrial building located at the southwest corner of Northeast Drive and Newell Street.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file?
There were none. There are none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item three tonight, the Harris Cleaning Project? Second time?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing and receive and file oral or written recommendation of approval of the planning program in the zoning commission.
Second. Counsel, do you have comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance, amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property.
Second. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Good. The motion carries. Thank you very much, Counsel. Let's do resolutions, please, and let's do the first three, four, five, and six. Mr. Welper?
Number four is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by KWS Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, at a total cost of $89,867 in conjunction with fiscal year 2014 Danes Complex Lighting Project. Number five is a resolution approving the 28e agreements with the City of Waterloo in the following communities: Denver, Dyzer, Hudson, Duckerton, Wellsburg, La Porte City, Evansdale, Trere, Jessup, Fairbank, North Benton, Ryan Beck, and Gladbrook Lincoln, and authorize Mayor and City Clerk to execute said document. Number six is a resolution adopting the City of Waterloo Bicycle Master Plan by hereby adopting Chapter Five, a non-motorized transportation component of Blackhawk County Metropolitan Area Transportation Policy Board, 2040 Long-Range Transportation Plan, as the City of Waterloo's Bicycle Master Plan.
Second. Counsel, do you have any comments regarding four, five, or six?
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, on number six, I would like to table that to allow more time to assess the impact to that particular item.
Okay. Mr. Schrader, or somebody, Noel, is there anybody that can speak to whether or not we need to table that and what it would do if we do table it?
Eric Schrader, City Planner. There's nothing eminent, so tabling it for, you know, as long as it's not tabled too long. It is a required element to become Blue Zones certified. It's one of the last few steps we have left, and there's not a lot of time left. I think it's sometime in May that we have to get Blue Zone certified, but, you know, there's nothing immediate or that it would hurt to table for a short period of time.
And I don't see anybody from the Blue Zones Project here. Okay, do you have a particular where you want to go with this, David, or you just want more time to evaluate it?
More time to evaluate. Two weeks would be sufficient.
Okay. So, is your motion to table for two weeks?
My motion is to table for two weeks.
Is there a second? Is there a motion and a second to table item six for two weeks? We'll act on that first. Can I do a roll call vote?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just would hope that by table on this, it actually does get brought up again. I mean, I read the whole thing over. I found nothing in it that was in any way controversial when you're talking about a master bicycle plan. It was good, and I would hope that we can get our certification, Blue Zone certification, as soon as possible, and don't let that run out.
Okay.
Councilman Jones.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, as an avid cyclist myself, it is high on my list. I just want to have additional time to gut it out.
And we will have it back in two weeks, madam.
Okay.
So, motion and second to table. Madam Clerk, roll call on that, please.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to table passes, so item six will be tabled for two weeks. Madam Clerk, roll call vote on four and five, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion's carry. Seven, eight, nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move we adopt a resolution approving request by Craig Fairbanks Homes for the final plat of Crossroads Estates, replat number five, generally located along Hummingberg Circle between Boba Link Drive and Sarah Drive, for the development of a five-lock residential subdivision on 1.9 acres. Eight is a resolution setting the date of hearing as March 10th to approve the request of stainless investments LLC of Waterloo to rezone .41 acres of land from R2, one and two-family residence district, to C1 CZ, Conditional Zoning District, located at 811 Elliott Court, and instruct City Clerk to publish notice. Nine is a resolution setting the date of hearing as March 10th to approve the request of stainless investments LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, for a site plan amendment to the C1 CZ Conditional Zoning District to allow for a 20-by-60 addition to the existing building, as well as expand a vehicular area located at 3533 Cedar Terrace Drive, and instruct City Clerk to publish notice.
Second. Very good. Motion and second on seven, eight, and nine, counsel comments? Madam Clerk, roll call votes, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
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 Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion's carry. Next three, please, 10, 11, 12.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number 10 is adopting a resolution approving memorandum of agreement regarding prorating of real estate taxes with LNH Farms Limited of Waterloo, Iowa, and authorize Mayor and City Clerk to execute said document. Item 11 is adopting a resolution approving notice of intent for MPDES coverage under general permit to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources in conjunction with the fiscal year 2014 Blowers Creek Storm Auto Lift Station and Dry Run Creek Improvements, contract number 842, and authorize Mayor to execute said document. And item number 12 is adopting a resolution approving an amendment to the city travel and meetings guidelines.
Second. Counsel, do you have comments regarding 10, 11, or 12? Madam Clerk? I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, with the travel policy, Park and I'm having a problem. Is the extended stay lodging and looking for a cooking facility for staff to be at? So, with that portion, I know it's either all or none, so I'm not in favor of number 12 when it comes out.
Okay. Any further comments? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Yes, on 10, 11, Noel, number 12.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. The motion's carry. Thank you, Counsel. Item number 13, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the third time in ordinance repealing Chapter Seven Housing of Title IX Building Regulations and enacting in lieu thereof a new Chapter Seven Rental Housing of Title IX Building Regulations.
Second. Now, let's read the ordinance, please.
In ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo by repealing Chapter Seven Housing of Title IX Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo and enacting in lieu thereof a new Chapter Seven Rental Housing of Title IX Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Still have a second? Counselman Hart?
Yes.
Motion and a second on item number 13, counsel, comments at this point? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Item, or I'm sorry, next motion.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk?
I just did that. There's two motions doing the exact same thing.
Okay.
The third time is passing it. We don't need to do that.
Okay.
A resolution approving the crime-free lease addendum for Waterloo housing ordinance.
Second. Very good. I'm sorry?
We have some people of the IQ speaking today.
I will allow that for us, as I always do, so there, let me get this taken care of here, and then I will. There's a motion and a second on the, was there a second?
Yes.
On the crime-free addendum? Before we vote on it, counsel, I'll accept anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this. Please step to this microphone, please. Give us your name and address, and please leave us your comments, three minutes.
My name is Mark Prehler with Blackhawk Landlords, 1419 West Fourth Street, and this was on the previous ordinance. We always seem to be lucky 13 for wherever we're headed. Wanted to point at the flag with liberty and justice for all. Some of our liberties, you know, right, wrong, or otherwise, through compromise of politics, some of our liberties sometimes get taken away, but justice for all needed to address. The only passionate part that my members keep telling me about is the rental registration fee itself, which has never been confirmed or been put in writing, but it's always been suggested at $25 apiece. It has been socratically, logically proven that $10 is plenty of the 25. It doesn't have to be a 500% increase, just like you won't raise pet registration fees 500% because the animal control thing isn't, you know, funding itself and vice versa. Following that line of thought that Marty Stokes brought up last week or the week before, that if this is truly to be justice for all, it's really going after the bad landlords, of which we are the good ones. That's where you could still make it the $10 fee, but double, quintuple, 500% increase the fines and fees against the bad landlords who do not come into compliance. That's what we're arguing about. That's the biggest thing that we're fighting about right now, is 500% increase for everybody isn't fair. Make it $10 apiece, where you still hit your budget, and you can probably still bring in that extra person that we were talking about doing to make the program work, but increase those fines against the bad landlords, and you are giving justice to where it needs to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for everybody's information, the fee schedule is not what we have adopted. The fee schedule is actually the last resolution in this ordinance, so that's why we will speak to the fee ordinance. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am here to address fees as well, and if you hear my comments now, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, sure.
The way I understand this new ordinance is that the goals are to gather information on all Waterloo rental units and rental unit owners. It's also to identify unregistered rental units and rental owners, thereby increasing or spreading out fees to maybe a larger base, and bringing into compliance those units that are currently not being inspected. Currently, we're on a five-year rotation for inspections, which, if I understand it correctly, there's one part-time administrative person, and there's one part-time inspector that handles these inspections. What's being proposed is a full-time administrative person to handle the unit registrations that will be coming in, the landlord licensing, and then also scheduling inspections, as well as one or two inspection staff. Just to give you an idea of what's being proposed for the $25 fee, I'll tell you what we're paying at my company right now. I'm sorry, Marty Stokes with Martin Rilters, 1419 West Fourth Street.
Thanks.
Currently, we pay about $1,885 per year for our fees. What's being proposed would increase our fees to $9,425 per year, plus $1,950 for the first year for licensing, bringing our first-year total to $11,375 that would, that my company would share the expense on. $1,885 to $11,375. Our property investors already are taking hits in different areas. Just to give you an example, the last two years, hazard insurance premiums have gone up for a lot of our property investors by 70 to 80%. Just in closing, I'd like to say that this is an unprecedented fee hike of unheard-of proportions, and if this new ordinance is truly not just a way to increase revenue for the City of Waterloo, then I ask you to adopt a more reasonable fee of $10 per year per unit.
Thanks, Marty.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Marty? Give us your name and address, please, though.
My name is Marty Dickey, 117 Derbyshire Road. The thing that I listen to on TV is the, I haven't heard anything about the workload as an example. I had Blackhawk County Assessor do a total residential parcel run for me, and it came out to 26,800 houses, residential parcels. And on a five-year basis, if you say 25% of those parcels are rentals, that comes to 6,700 rentals in this community. And I don't know what number you use, but you're going to have to use numbers to back into your manpower resources. Greg, what number of rentals, does anyone have an idea? But I'm sure it's not perfect, because it's got to be a plus or a minus amount, but what would be the total number of rentals that you use for these calculations for manpower?
I don't know, Marty, but Craig has done a lot of detailed work.
I'll just finish my presentation.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
If you take 6,700 rentals and divide it by five years, that's 1,340 a year. If you use 240 production days, that's 5.58 houses per day that's got to be done each year to get to your five-year total. If you use, say, a person can do three, one employee can do three a day, and you figure that's 2.67 hours per inspection, and you use the production days, that's 340. Three times 240, that's one person could do 720 a day. So, if you have two employees working at it, that's 1,440. That gives you 100 excess. In other words, you're under your 6,700 over a five-year period based on 1,340 per year to reach your 6,700. Now, if you drop that down, if you drop that number down to a three-year process, you're actually increasing your workload about 67%. So, all of a sudden, you go from, you go from 1,340 houses per year to 2,234 houses per year. So, then if you use the same numbers and say, three years divided into 6,700, that's 10 per day needs to be done to be able to get through a year for three years to get to the 6,700 number. So, again, if you use three per day, 2.67 hours per house, three houses times 240 production days, that gets you 1,440. You're 794 houses short to get through a three-year inspection cycle. And I, and I've got this spreadsheet if you want to get, it'd be a good one for you to have because if you, you gotta come up with some number to back into your manpower planning for these inspections. And so at that rate, I, I don't know what the numbers are as far as what you plan on hiring, but you're gonna have to, the five-year would work, the three-year would definitely not work.
Thanks, Marty, appreciate it. You must have worked with numbers somewhere in your life.
Mr. Mayor, could I?
Mr. Jones?
May I just make one comment on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I did the math myself as well.
Speak up, though, please.
I did the math myself as well. And where it actually works is that when you have multiple units in a single building, there's not all this travel time. So if you have 10 units in a building, you can definitely hit those 10 within the same day or the same inspection period. So that's how it works out, I think, when you have these multi-unit buildings that allow an inspector or two to hit all these different locations. So the math actually does work out.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Okay, we're gonna move forward. There is a motion and a second on the resolution for the crime-free lease addendum. Counsel, do you have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, we'll talk about, in the next one, we'll talk about the rates.
We will. Okay. So we're voting now on the crime-free lease addendum for the Waterloo housing ordinance. There is a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, so the motion carries. We're down to the last resolution.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
Resolution approving.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lind, I'm sorry.
Can I make a motion that we reduce the fee at this time?
Yes, can you do it now? I'm, let me get my rules of orders here clear. Can he, can he make that before the resolution is made to start with?
Yes, he could make a motion with a different fee schedule.
Okay, Mr. Lind, you, you may, you may make a motion at whatever fee schedule you'd like, and we'll vote on that prior to addressing the one that we have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we reduce the fees to a reasonable amount. $10 seems reasonable to me. It's fair to the landlords, it's fair to the public. It's, it's not a 500, 500% increase, it's 100% increase. Anyway, I'd make a motion that we reduce the $25 to $10.
Okay, there is a motion, Mr. Lind's motion, everybody heard it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. It's a roll call vote to reduce the fee schedule. I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The motion is to establish the fee at $10.
The motion is to establish the fee at $10. But Counsel, do you have comments? Yes, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I do, I understand what, what people are saying about the increase and the magnitude of the increase. But really, when, when you look at it on a per-unit-per-month basis, it's what, $2.08 a month? I mean, it's, it's fairly, fairly small. But I understand when you have multiple units, it really adds up. One of the other things I think that we need to think about is Craig has really run the numbers at $25 a year. I forgot how many units was to actually pay for the program, pay for the two people that will actually work in this. So if we decide to only fund it instead of $25 for $10, then we're underfunding it, we still have to hire the two employees. So that means we're really gonna socialize the rest, and that means I have to take up a portion, not as a landlord, but it's just as a, as a resident here as well. And so does everybody else. So we're basically, you know, taking that landlord fee and spreading it around to everybody else that isn't a landlord.
Craig, why don't we, one more time, would you please? Yeah, give us, give us your explanation, man, also, Counsel.
Craig Clark, Bill Lempfischel, the only thing I really wanted to kinda say there is, David said hiring two additional people. That is not correct. One and a half of these people, we already have. They already work for the city, we already pay their wages. My proposal is to take a half-time person to a full-time person. That's the only change in, I guess, monies when you look at it for the city. But those people, one and a half people already work for the city.
And you're buying some software?
Correct.
What, so Craig, one more time, justify your $25 for us, would you please? As to how you arrived at that and et cetera, and what the program is doing now versus what you expect it to do.
Okay, how I arrived at the $25, I more took what our budget is. I took two city employees, come up to $156,000. That's for their wages and benefits. That's the very first number. Then I took into account vehicles, computers, kinda used some state numbers on different things because those aren't directly in my budget, and came up with about a cost for the program, 170, 175,000. Right in that range there would be an estimated cost for the program. The only hard numbers I can get out of my budget are the two people. Those are fixed costs, I know exactly what they are. The rest is kinda spread out from the whole city, whether it be the city attorney or somebody else working in the clerk's office or Michelle doing financial things. I mean, those things are covered other places. So that was the first, how I kinda came into this number. Dealing with the inspections, I agree, we probably do need to do more inspections. The numbers do work based on one full-time inspector, based on a 12-plex. Let's use a 12-plex for an example. And these averages are very average. I mean, if we go to a place that somebody takes care of and we have very little issues with, that inspection can be quite quick. A 12-plex typically probably is about a three-hour inspection. That's 12 units. We a lot of times do two of those in one day. A lot of times when you get those 12-plexes, there's three or four in a row. So we might do two one day, two the next day, that type of thing. But on average, we probably average about 10 to 12 inspections a day, depending on just different things. The, I think what else I had? The numbers based on the $25 a unit, how many actual units we have is still a little bit of a guess. We can use math, different things. You know, based off 6,500 is 162,500, $500. Based off 7,000, which I think is probably a pretty fair number, I'll give or take 500 on that, is $175,000 a year. That's just simply how the math came out.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
So Craig.
Mr. Schmidt?
Craig, just to be clear again, so you currently have one and a half of these two people today on your staff?
Correct.
And so you're basically just realigning or reassigning the expense for them?
Yes.
Because they're being paid today by something else?
Yes, they're being paid out of the general fund.
Okay. And, and, thank you. And if I could, just real quickly to, to kinda tag on to what Councilman Lind said, I, I do think, oh, 500%, I just can't fathom that we would approve that. It seems to me 100% is, is very adequate. I understand what David's saying about the taxpayers subsidizing this, but what I've heard is that, you know, the taxpayers subsidize golf, we subsidize leisure services, we subsidize a variety of different things. I ultimately would like to see this paid for, but I'd like to see it paid for maybe over a period of a couple of years. I'd like to see us figure out a way to maybe charge a higher fee to repeat offenders, and I think that maybe that's part of the discussion we've had or may have already been approved. But see how that plays out, because I, I do have a problem with a 500% increase on, on responsible, good business people that happen to be landlords, and I just don't think that's fair.
Thank you.
Craig, if, if it went to $10, what would that do to your figures as far as, would it pay for it then?
No.
Would $10 pay for it? So where would the rest of the money come from?
It'll just come out of the general fund budget.
And this is specific just to the group of landlords that are in Waterloo that are making money off, off their rental properties? This, this, this ordinance that we just passed is specific just to people who own property and rent that property.
Correct.
So they're making money off that property?
Correct.
And this is gonna be inspecting that property?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Would that be a maybe, Jim? That would be a maybe, they're making money. Would you agree with that?
Okay. Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I agree a lot with, what Mr. Schmidt is saying as well, that, that we should look at higher fees for repeat offenders and such. I guess I'm just looking at it from the other end in that if, if we find that we're collecting more money than we need for the program, then the fees would be reduced, I believe. Right? I know, it's hard to think, right? All right, so that's the big joke of the night. But anyway, I truly believe that when we look at, we're trying to get this thing to pay for itself, right? And that's, that's ultimately what we're trying to do. So we're just trying to align the dollars with, with the income-producing property. And I know it's debatable whether the properties are income-producing or not, but that is the goal of what we're trying to do.
Any further comments?
May I ask one question?
Mr. Lind?
Will we reduce property taxes because we're going to a fee-based tax collection system?
She's right here, she's hiding, she's sliding down.
Michelle Weidner, Chief Financial Officer, that's really a question for you at this table. But the way that the budget currently works today, any department revenue offsets that department's property tax asking. So yes, if, I think truly, if you adopt a fee that supports that program, then property taxes won't be used to support that program.
Mr. Mayor, just one final comment real briefly. So, so today, Craig, you're paying 156,000 for one and a half people. And at $10, we would collect at least, well, you're guessing, at least $70,000. So we would pick up half that cost just by instituting the $10. And I understand that's not gonna cover everything, and I'd like to cover everything. Maybe we could cover everything over a period of a couple of years. But I'm just troubled again by the 500%.
Yes, I guess the only thing would be is, right now, we do collect 40,000. So we would no longer be collecting that 40,000 for the inspections. So it'd actually be about a $30,000 gain, I guess, by going to your $10. It's probably the best way to put it, instead of a 70,000.
What did Mr. Stokes say about the 500% plus the first year? Was that a registration fee?
That was one thing I wasn't for sure about, what he said about the first year. There is nothing difference in the first year to the next year than, I mean, it's all the same.
There isn't a one-time registration fee, was that what he was referring to?
No, there's not.
Okay, remember what that was, Marty?
There's no fee on it.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper, I, I have to, I have to share this, that much of this stems from 20 years of work. It goes back to 1994 with the Johnson Street Apartments, when we discovered that the people were living in some pretty horrible conditions. Many of the people didn't have water, they didn't have electricity, the place was crawling with bugs. We realized that our, our inspections were bad. We had no idea how many people had rental property out there. And working with the landlords, in 1994, we were looking at self-inspection. We came very close to getting it done when the landlords changed their mind at the last minute. Roughly 10 years later, Chief DeBerg and Fire Marshal Dave Boson, again, we thought we were gonna have a self-inspection with the landlords. At the last minute, it failed again. So this is the closest we've gotten in 20 years. And I applaud the landlords, and I applaud Greg Clark for, for getting us this far with this. Again, I certainly will support the $25.
Okay. Last time for comments. Miss, there's a motion and a second on the floor to reduce the fee schedule to $10 rather than $25. The vote will be on that. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to reduce to $10 fails. May I have another motion?
Make a motion or to pass a resolution approving the fee schedule for the Waterloo housing ordinance as originally written.
Second. Very good, we'll have a roll call vote on that. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's, it's been a long and arduous road, and we are where we are now. And I'm hoping that we have a, a good product come from this, and all of the input is much appreciated. Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time in ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by amending Section 6 of Chapter 2, nuisances of Title IV Public Health and Safety, and by amending Sections 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 10 of Chapter 3, solid waste collection and disposal of Title IV Public Health and Safety for ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by amending Section 6 of Chapter 2, nuisances of Title IV Public Health and Safety, and by amending Sections 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 10 of Chapter 3, solid waste collection and disposal of Title IV Public Health and Safety of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo.
Second. Very good, Counsel, do you have any comments regarding this? Hopefully, everybody's aware of what we're doing here. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules.
Second. Very good, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Motion fails, we'll address it again next week. Item 15, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move to receive.
Oh, wait a minute. Please, what did I do with? I had a packet for everyone that Mr. Harrod gave me that wanted passed out at this time. And I'm gonna do it before we read this. They were sitting right here. You didn't pick them up, did you, Randy? Your, your, the stuff you gave to me to pass out. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Randy gave me seven different packets of more suggestions for the animal control ordinance, and he gave them to me, and I, I thought they were sitting right here. There were several pages, and I don't know what happened to them. We'll find them, Randy, and I will distribute them. So I don't know what happened to them. I'm sorry, Ms. Cole, for interrupting. You do?
It's in with my bid.
Oh, it's in with the bid packets. You know?
Thank you.
Well.
May I go ahead and read the motion, or are we gonna hold this up?
No, you may, please.
We get through that? Okay, I move, we receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance repealing Chapter 1 Animal Control of Title V Police Regulations and enacting in lieu thereof a new Chapter 1 Animal Control of Title V Police Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo.
Second. Very good, there's a motion and a second. Counsel, do you have comments? This item? Generally, ladies and gentlemen, I wouldn't take comments. We've had lots of comments on this, but I know there are a couple of people here that weren't here last week to make comments. If you'd like, now is the time to do so. If not, we're gonna go ahead with the vote.
Vivian Brookman at 432 Congress Street. My objections to this is you don't do enough to the person. I mean, you say you're gonna fine him this, you're gonna fine him this, you're gonna fine him this. Okay, you fine him this, you fine him this. What happens at the end when he doesn't pay those fines anyway? There should be some way that you could say, okay, you don't pay your fines, you go to jail. You don't pay your fines, you do this. There's got to be something at the end of the program. You can't just keep fining, 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 fining. I was the one that was bitten by the pit bulls. According to the state of Iowa, he's supposed to pay all my medical bills. I have over $50,000 in medical bills. He hasn't touched a dime. You fine him $2,000? Okay! That's, that's all there is to it. So he gets another bill. Big deal. There has to be something at the end of the program. And it's not just the dogs. I have nothing against the dogs. I love pit bulls. But it's the owner that has to be responsible for those dogs. And there has to be something at the end of the tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brookman.
Thank you.
Jim, could you explain what happens at the end of that?
Jim Walsh, City Attorney. Of course, there are civil remedies, but if people don't have the resources to pay judgments, there's nothing you can do to them. We don't have debtors' prison here. We don't put people in jail for making mistakes. Unfortunately, the repercussions of an attack go on for years, and the irresponsible owner can't be put in jail, and you can't do much to him besides fine him. This ordinance, though, does set up a mechanism to try to prevent that by creating a designation that would thereafter either make the person give up the dog or get insurance and be able to be financially responsible for anything that happens later with the dog. I realize it's not perfect.
Jim, is there a remedy, though, for a person that gets fines that just ignores them and doesn't pay?
The magistrates will not put people in jail for being poor. You can't get it. You can get orders that they'll do this, orders that they'll do that, but if they just are deadbeats, they're deadbeats.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Jim, it may be part of Mrs. Brookman's question too, though, is, is, you know, you go out and get in a car accident and kill somebody.
Yeah.
You can get sent to prison for that.
If, if you're criminally negligent, you can.
Okay.
That, that, this would be an answer that you'd have to get out of the county attorney. They're the only ones who could charge him with an offense that could put him in prison. I doubt that this person who had the dog purposely set it on the lady. If they did, that would be a crime, and they could go to prison for it. If they did, that would be a crime, and they could go to prison for it. If they're just stupid, no.
But you can go to prison for having a car accident without intentionally trying to kill somebody, and so obviously, this person didn't intentionally, but they're still responsible.
You could have a whole law school class out of the difference between negligent and criminally negligent.
So you're not aware of that ever being noticed?
I'm not aware of anybody ever being put in jail for having a dog that got away and caused damage. No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Give us your name and address, please.
Brian Detmer, 123 Mosley. I'd like to thank the counsel. It sounds like you're doing a good job on this ordinance so far, but I have an issue with the determination of vicious dog. The way I interpret it, it sounds like no one will be able to have a watchdog anymore. My dog is not only like my companion, but my house has been broken into, and I basically can't, you know, I can't take the dog with me hardly anymore, so I leave him home to guard my property. I'm in the process of putting up a fence, so that's basically why I have an issue is I can't afford to hire an armed guard, and this $300,000 insurance sounds like I won't be able to have a dog either. That's basically what my problem is.
Mr. Detmer, I'm thinking that, and I'm confident that this ordinance was drafted by people that have very good common sense, and there is certainly a degree of discretion that is built into this, and I'm, again, quite confident that that discretion will be exercised very wisely and that situations like yourself will be accounted for during the process. Mr. Harrod?
The papers I gave you, you can read at your leisure or not, whatever. And I'll only mention just a little bit. There are just a couple things in this that I have some problems with.
Give us your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Randy Harrod, 111 Highon Avenue.
Thank you.
There is a part of there about where the person who represents the city, policeman, whoever, comes to the house and wants to come in to make sure everything is according to code. That's a reasonable thing to be able to want to do. The problem comes into is that it appears from this that the person has the power to come in whether the homeowner wants them to or not, and I don't think that's legal. And in fact, in the stuff I gave you, I give you reference to the court cases that basically say that it's not legal, specifically for people who are inspectors and like the code enforcement people. It doesn't mean they don't have the need. They have the need, but what they have to do is leave, go back, get a warrant, and then come back to the house, and then go in. That's all that that's saying. The other things, I'm not going to go into that much, except to mention what the gentleman was talking about. It's a real, that's a real problem. And it gets into that definition of guard dog. There has been, by the words here, I don't know if it's by intent, but it would appear that the word guard dog and dangerous dog are somewhat overlapping, and I would make the point that it doesn't. A guard dog is a trained dog to respond to the owner or handler and like that. If he has a dog that's trained that way, it doesn't fall under that. Dangerous dog does. And I think Mr. Walsh is correct, too, about the thing, don't get me wrong, I'd like to see some of these people go to prison on this, about how you make that move from what happens here to having the person subject to fines and state penalties. There are the laws from the state. They're under Class D felonies. They are available to be used, but the person has to be shown to have demonstrated that they either knowingly own a dog that will fight, that they have trained a dog to fight, or that they are raising dogs to fight. If it falls underneath that, then our county attorney should be interested, but I think he's right. I don't think this has actually been tried in law yet.
Thanks, Randy. Appreciate it. Very good. Counsel, comments? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Jones?
I do support the ordinance as it is written today. I'm hoping that, you know, maybe next fall, we can go back and address some of the, some of the fees. I don't think it goes far enough as far as discouraging backyard breeding, but I guess time will tell. So hopefully, we can address it next fall and see how it works, and if we have to make adjustments, hopefully, we'll make adjustments because this is very important that we do.
Yes, it is.
Very important we get it right.
Yes, it is. And we will, we will do that, I'm quite sure, as we spend time with this, and there's been much input, all well-intentioned, from an awful lot of people. This is our start, and as we, if we see changes that need to be made along the way, we'll do them. Okay? It's a roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
I move that we suspend the rules.
Second. Motion and second to suspend the rules. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. The motion fails. We'll address it again next week. Item 16, please. Mr. Hart?
I move to instruct the community planning and development director to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract for asbestos abatement for 134 Dearborn Avenue, 928 Mulberry Street, 717 Benton Street, 927 Mullen Avenue, 67 Franklin Street, 820 Fowler Street, 409 State Street, 520 Cottis Street, 1013 Lincoln Street, 420 Dawson Street, and 801 and 805 Commercial Street.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have comments on item number 16? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file plans, specifications, form of contract.
Second. Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, all of you, for your input. It's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. It's time for oral presentations. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to mayor or council, please step up to our microphone, and if you can, please limit your comments to three minutes. Give us your name and address.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I, there was a statement made last week about Mr. Dan's nuisance ordinance, that we were holding some of the people's feet to the fire. Well, it's not Mr. Dan's nuisance ordinance, it's a property ordinance, and it affects all the residents, all the businesses, and even the landlords of Waterloo, so. I think Mr. Forrest, I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel about it. We mean, hold nobody's feet to the fire, it affects everybody.
Thanks, Jim.
Bill Camire, 526 Holt Park Boulevard. I'd just like to make a suggestion tonight in that next council meeting. I'd like you to explain what your ground rules are to suspend the rules. It seems like you suspend the rules on just about everything, and you go to the second and third reading and you pass it all in one night. To me, there should be, if you're going to suspend the rules, there should be, along with that motion, there should be a compelling reason why you need to suspend the rules. But I think you use that as a crutch to just get them passed through, and I just would suggest that I'd like to know what's your criteria when you say we want to suspend the rules and go to the second, third reading the same night?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Forrest Dilder, 1725 Huntington Road. I'd like to speak a little bit about the budget dollars, your honor.
Yes, sir.
I've been attending a few of these meetings and trying to gather what I can and understand what I can. There's never a good time to raise property taxes. As been mentioned, you have a smaller group paying the tax because of all of the different things you have. You have TIFs, you have KIRAs, you have CLiras. Those people either don't pay every year or don't pay for 10 years, or the TIFs, those, like the downtown TIF has been there forever. Ever since it was created, it's still there. So the Courier editorial tonight mentioned that we will be getting tax revenue out of there. We will be getting tax revenue, but they will not be helping pay for police and fire, the biggest part of our budget. You get franchise dollars. This year, we've had some outrageous heating bills. Your franchise dollars will be bigger this year because of that. Not only that, but you add another percent. You're at 3% when you were at 2% last year. You've got a state refund. That should help us not to have a tax increase. You did get refunded for the properties going down. I suggest that you take some of those dollars out of those TIFs and help pay. When you passed the ordinance for stormwater and these types of things, you said now the nonprofits, the churches, and the places like that will be helping pay for city, helping pay for the things they use as well as the rest. Okay? That being so, what about the TIF areas? If you build a brand-new hotel, motel, and you TIF it, they're not going to pay. And if you extend the TIF like you have downtown forever, they never help pay for police and fire. So you continually burden those few, I say few, it isn't few, I'm using the wrong words, but the same people, the same fund of money, you just keep drawing and drawing. You just voted in a 500% increase to the landlords. Will we pass that on to the renters, or will we absorb it? I don't know yet. That will raise the cost of living for these folks. So they've got higher, higher heating costs, and the water, now we got, are suggested to run the water, and I called all my renters and said, run the water. So now they're going to have higher water fees. Along with that, the city's going to get extra sewer fees because they're going to have higher water usage. There's no break been mentioned for them. They're trying to save my home and be able to take a bath. There's other ways of doing it other than continually taxing the residential houses. Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest.
Marty Dickey, 117 Dearbornshire. I know it's reported about losing some fire and police, and I really hate to see that happen. And I think there's one thing that you could do, and I think Michelle mentioned it at the last meeting, that the northeast side TIF, there was money taken out of that. And we've had TIFs around here, I think the Rath Street TIF has been, Rath Street TIF has been, what, 20 years, 30 years? And if you take your frozen, your frozen tax dollars and any incremental base taxes above that increment, maybe as the city council, she said the city council could vote to pull the money out, so perhaps she should pull some money out of the TIFs for a zero property tax increase, bring down some fees, and then save fire and police.
Thanks, Marty.
I have some papers to give out. My name is Ted Liegeman. I live at 1758 Pinehurst Lane, Waterloo, Iowa. About two weeks ago, I was here, and I was discussing the difference in premium cost to the city of Waterloo versus a private employee, employees. So I had questions as to where I got my information, number one, and I also had questions as to what are the figures. So to obtain figures of the cost of health premiums for an employee in the city of Waterloo, I asked management personnel working for the city of Waterloo, who is conversant with these figures, to give them to me. To obtain figures from a private employer, I spoke to the chief executive officer of a firm in Waterloo that has over 1,000 employees. I want to thank both of them for talking to me and for the work they did. What I found is the premium cost for an employee working for the city of Waterloo with a stay-at-home spouse for 2013 was $21,013. For the same employee working for a local private employer, getting Tier 3 health insurance, the top health insurance, which is somewhat equivalent to the top health insurance because there's only one tier for city employees, so instead of paying $21,000 for the premium as the city does, the private employer pays $9,910 per year. This means the premium overpay for the same employee by the city of Waterloo compared to the local employer is $11,102 in 2013. If we look at the premium for the same worker in the city of Waterloo for 2012, the city premium, the city paid $17,840. This means that the city cost of health insurance for this employee from one year to the next increased $3,172.80. This is an increase of 18%. The contribution of a city employee for 2013 for health care out of his paycheck is $960. The contribution for this privately-employed employee, his monetary contribution is $3,420. It means that the private employee is receiving $2,460 less per year because of the health premium he pays. Now, I've been to a number of city council meetings, and I know we have competitive bids for a police car, and if the police car is $100 less, we buy it from the agency, that is $100 less. We're looking at something where there's a difference of 11, over $11,000. I think instead of continuing raising property tax, continuing to develop new fees and then raising the fees, I think the city council and mayor should look to other ways of solving the Waterloo financial plight. I know this takes intelligence, it takes diligence, and it takes courage, but I think that is why the mayor and the city council have been elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. I am going to ask the council, or the city clerk, to just respond to some of your comments because this is, you've made quite some accusations here, and I don't want people...
These are figures given to me.
Let's let the clerk respond, please, briefly.
Well, I would just clarify that the city does not pay the standard health insurance premiums like most organizations do because we are self-insured. So there isn't $21,000 that's paid out to someone for a premium for an employee. This may be, without having all my numbers in front of me, this may be what the overall cost divided by the number of employees. I'm not sure...
This, this was given to me by management personnel in the city. This is the cost to the city, as it was explained to me, the total health cost divided by the number of employees, 650 people.
So it's not necessarily the premium, but it...
It is the health cost.
Right, health cost, okay. I think it's also important to note, though, that we're not comparing apples to apples here because we don't know what out-of-pocket maxes are on these, we don't know what co-pays are on these, we don't know what deductibles are on these. So to just say the premium, we don't know how the benefits match up. So it's not a total fair statement to just say, here's what people are paying for insurance because, as we all know, insurance varies from every company and what's covered and at what percentage it's covered. Our employees have taken a great increase in what they are covered. Their premiums may not have increased much out of their paychecks, but their out-of-pocket maxes have, they're more than, I think, 500% increased by the end of this contract from, I think they were 200, and they're going to be close to 1,000 by the time they're done. So we have been shifting this. We haven't been doing it in the means of the premium, but the city has been making great strides in shifting some of the responsibility to the employees, but we've been doing it more in the way of co-pays, deductibles, out-of-pocket max, and those sorts of things. So it's the people that are using it the most that are paying for it, and with being self-funded, that's probably the correct way to do it.
to her.
Okay. So number one, you're saying there's a difference in benefits. The difference, there is truly a difference in benefits, and the city employee gets better benefits, pays lower deductible, pays lower copay than the privately employed worker on a top tier. So there is a difference, and the city employee gets the benefits, gets greater benefits. Now, I'm married. If I go home and tell my wife that I've purchased a plan that costs $11,000 more than another plan for similar coverage, I don't think my wife, I, I don't think I'd go home. Okay? So all I'm asking is the city council to evaluate the costs, because $11,000, we're talking, we're fighting over $25 here tonight. $11,000 is a substantial amount to look into.
Thank you, Mr. Liegeman. Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Liegeman's done a very good job of reviewing the figures for us, and he's given this careful thought, so I don't want this, this to sound critical of him, but we operate in a unique environment, we're not in a private sector. We cannot do things the way people in the private sector do. We wish we could sometimes. We're subject to collective bargaining laws. We cannot change those benefits, no matter how much we think they may have grown out of sync over the years. They are a very nice health plan, they're very beneficial, they obviously cost more than the private sector does. If someone thinks that it's appropriate, they should go to the legislature in Des Moines and ask them to give municipalities the tools so that we could compare private sector costs with public sector costs. We're not allowed to do that. If we go and to the employee unions who we deal with and say, we need to move you down so that your benefits are similar to what people pay in a private sector, they would say, see at the bargaining table, and we'll see what the arbitrator says at the end of the day. The arbitrators will compare costs of public sector employees with other public sector employees only. We're not allowed to compare them with private sectors. I see your frustration, I understand it, but within the limits of what this city council can do, there isn't much. So, I, and I'd be glad to chat with you about it.
The one thing I want to say is that I've seen discussion for pay raises for employees that work for the city here at city council meetings. And I think what the city council shall do when they're discussing these pay raises is realize that there are tremendous other benefits for city employees, and that there are tremendous other costs when they continue to raise city employee wages. I'm not against city employees, but I am against inefficiency in government, and I am against an increase of $3,172 over one year's time in health insurance costs.
Thank you, Mr. Liegeman.
Thank you.
Any minute further? Bill, quickly, okay? Okay, thanks.
Bill Kamire, 526 Holm Park Boulevard.
How do you buy your insurance? Do, do you people deal with your own insurance?
It's, yes, Bill, we're self-insured.
Well, you ought to explore, I don't know if the school board still does it, but I, as you well know, I was on the school board for 12 years. We had a committee...
Yeah, we do.
...of insurance, and they bought the insurance.
Yeah.
You, they, they told you what the rates were.
Thanks, Bill.
So, I, I just wanted to make sure that's what you were doing.
We are. Thank you. All right? Second. Okay, there is a motion to receive and file oral comments and adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.